Good evening, everybody. Hi. It's a little after six. I'd like to start the meeting if we could. Thanks for coming. Would everybody please stand to join me?
(Applause)
Thank you. Before we start and open our public hearing, it's a special night for us tonight. We're saying thank you and not really goodbye, but a hearty thanks and a bit of a parting to our historian of 30 years, Nancy Kelly.[55.62][55.62](Applause) Nancy has been a historian here in Reinbeck for 50, 60 years. In the '60s, she started Kinship Books with her husband, Arthur. Nancy's family is an old family, many, many generations. Palatine settlers, Nancy. And you've been here through the Germans, the Dutch, the English.[90.86][90.86](Laughter) The Native Americans came a little bit before you.[95.04][95.04](Laughter) Also, you know, Nancy was on the town board for 11 years. So her commitment to this town and her service is unparalleled. We don't have many people like Nancy Kelly. She's in the library a couple of times a week. And though she is stepping down, she will be available. We've got everything on a disc. We're going to be organizing that. And I can't tell you how grateful we are to have you, your knowledge and your commitment and for what you and Arthur stand for and your family, your sense of place. It's defining for us and it means a lot. So I've had an immense pleasure and education working with you. And I'm not going to say goodbye. I'm just going to say thank you and adieu de ché.[150.63][150.63](Laughter)[151.63][151.63](Applause) See, it's just a token. We really, I don't know what we can do to repay you, but it's a light to give a crystal vase for your flowers. And it's got the seal of Reinbeck on it. "With deepest gratitude, Nancy Kelly, Town Historian, 1994 to 2004."[180.01][180.01](Applause) Whoever's easier.
Oh, Gloria. I'm very pleased that Town Board took time to get that for me because I realized how much effort and time is involved in being on the board. And I also want to recognize my prior town historians, DeWitt Grinnell, who was Town Historian during the 200th anniversary of the last century, and Richard Crowley. And during the time that I've been on the Town Board, we've gotten records that had been stored up in the archive in Albany. And now they're here in our local history room, in the archive room here at the Star Library. And so I'm pleased that we have them available. And these are very early town records in early 1700s, gone on through. And we've been busy trying to scan them and get some of them online on the internet. And so that's been a big project. And I don't want to take up much time, but we suddenly had time to do my best.
You've done more than your best. You've exceeded expectations.[295.33][295.33](Applause) This is also a sweet moment because we're passing the baton. One of the few powers a supervisor has is appointing the town historian. I don't need a resolution from the board guy, so I'm not asking for one.[314.45][314.45](Laughter) I'm happy to appoint Nancy's daughter, Susan Fitzjoe, Susan Kelly Fitzjoe, another generation of historian and educator. And Susan's looking forward to doing more programs with schoolchildren here. And we have such a rich history. And I want to thank you for stepping up and I look forward to working with you too.[345.52][345.52](Applause) All right. The fifty Kelly, fifty Kellys.[357.44][357.44](Laughter) That was a nice thing. Okay, we, I'm going to just go in order here. May I have a motion to approve our Town Board meeting minutes from May 28, 2024?
Motion. Second?
Thank you, Charles. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any questions, comments? Passes unanimously. Okay, we said thank you to Nancy. We've, I've appointed Susan. I just want to let people know that we'll be recognizing Juneteenth as we have done with, thanks to Culture Connect and the Buckley Middle School, Buckley Middle School students signage that lives at the middle school. We put it in our Town Hall courtyard here, so that'll be from the 14th of June through the 23rd. So we want to thank Culture Connect and the Buckley Middle School students for their commitment to recognizing Juneteenth. We still, we got, we did get, I think, an appointee for the Conservation Advisory Board, but all of you folks are here paying attention to workforce housing. And I'm pleading with you, if you have any time, consider serving on the Conservation Advisory Board. We need people. We need a vibrant board to help us as we go through seekers and environmental reviews to make sure that it's in keeping with our comp plan. And if anyone has time, please consider serving on the Conservation Advisory Board. I also want to remind you that if you're doing a project and you might think you need a building permit, please check with the Building Department because you probably do. And I think that's it for the reminders. We have a workforce housing public hearing, which I'd like to open up to Ken. Are you going to give another brief? Do we want another? I mean, I see the same faces here. Would anybody like to go over everything we went over two weeks ago? Or would you like to comment? I think we're good, Ken.
I'll leave now.[504.98][504.98](Laughter)
I'll call you when we're ready. No. I'm going to open the floor up to comments. We have the spread, you know, we have the presentation up here. I did want Ken to talk a little bit about, and we can talk about this, what the affordability will be. Do you want me to take them through that? Or you want to do that? Yeah, go ahead. You stand right here. This workforce housing will be based on the area median income, which is what, about $105,000 for a family of four, which isn't much. And we have units set aside for 80%, 60%, 50%, and 30%.
That's correct.
Two bedrooms, one bedrooms, and one bedroom, two bedroom, and three bedrooms. So Ken, you want to take us through the breakdown? What this, what the costs could be?
Sure. Good evening. Ken Carney from the Carney Realty Group. What we typically do in a mixed income project similar to this, we, as our architect said last week, we set aside a few units for people with physical disabilities. And we target eight apartments at the lowest income level. What we have found is those units are normally very attractive to people with some type of physical disability. So we have two one-bedroom units, 30%, five two-bedrooms, and one three-bedroom. At 50%, we have rents-
Ken, could you give out what the rents would be at the 30% and 40%?
Sure. The rents, gross rent, including utilities, for one bedroom, $670. Two bedrooms, $803. And the one, three bedrooms is $928. Then we continue with the income mix. We have 13 units at 50%. Four one-bedrooms that would rent for $1,115. Six two-bedrooms at $1,338. And three three-bedrooms that would rent for $1,546. The majority of the units are at 60%. We have 12 one-bedrooms at 60%. Those rents are $1,338 for a one-bedroom. We have 24 two-bedrooms. Those rent for $1,606. We have 10 three-bedrooms that rent at $1,856. Continuing on, we have units at 70%, 80%. We have six units at 70 and six units at 80. The four two-bedrooms at 70% rent at $1,874. And the two at 70% rent at $2,165. The 80% of four two-bedrooms rent for $2,000. And lastly, we have two three-bedroom units at 80% rent for $2,475. What we have found, we have done this the last 10, 12 years. We've concentrated on mixed income throughout the Hudson Valley, and it's worked out well. It's a broad range of incomes, broad range of work that these people who live here, work in different jobs all throughout the county and the Hudson Valley. We also do get some seniors. We do. We've got seniors on fixed incomes, primarily the one-bedrooms and the two-bedrooms. Our unit count is, we have 80 units, 79 are rentals. One is a two-bedroom super's unit, non-rental. As I stated last week, that two-bedroom super is our eyes and ears when our property manager is not there. Very, very important. Personally, very critical to our management philosophy and our management team. So we have 18 one-bedroom units at Locust Hill. We have 44 two-bedrooms. And then we have 18 three-bedrooms. So 43 of the 44 two-bedrooms will be rental units and one will be a non-rent barroom super unit. You know, the income limits, the income limits go, normally go up every year. This year, it kind of stayed flat. But by the time we would rent this project up, the income limits would probably go up two more times. You know, so the majority of the units are anywhere for one person, $40,200 up to, close to $60,000 for one person. For two people, you're at $46,000 up to $73,000. For three people, it's $51,700 up to about $82,000.
This is the median income.
The median income's, right. Based on the median income of Duchess County.
So 30% of that, 50% of that, 60, 70.
And the goal here is for a tenant not to pay more than 30% of their income toward housing. That's the goal. Nobody can live here according to our rules and pay more than 48% of their income toward housing to feed the purpose. But the goal here, in a perfect world, would be that a tenant would pay approximately 30% of their income for total housing costs. That includes rent and that includes the utility allowance. Let me add, the utility allowance here is low, lower than any other projects we've done because the last two years we've had to switch to electric source air heat pumps with geothermal ground source heating. So we will have geothermal here, geothermal heating with electric air source heat pumps, which promises to lower all of the heating costs for the tenants as well.
And because of our Community Choice Aggregate, you get 100% renewable electricity at a locked-in rate. So you'll have access to good, clean electricity at a solid rate.
That's great.
Thank you. I mean, does anybody have questions about Julie?
I'm Julie Zito, and I'm Reinbeck resident. And I rise to compliment the progress that has been made on worker housing for Reinbeck. Many, many individuals have been involved in this process, and much thought is apparent in your planning. I guess I'm really talking to you.[979.72][979.72](Laughter) One challenge that remains is whether the Carney Group and the town leaders might address the rent gap for the lowest worker, lowest-paid workers. Maybe there could be additional grant funds to subsidize one or two units, or getting HUD Housing Choice vouchers. And a question we might, we all might ask is, why should we do this? Well, it would allow Reinbeck to boast worker housing for all and even among the least paid workers. So worker housing for all.[1035.72][1035.72](Applause)
Before we take the next speaker, I just want to say that I think the only referral we've received back is from the Duchess County Department of Planning. And they said that this was a matter of local concerns with comments. And I will read the comments to you. Duchess County Department of Planning and Development has reviewed the subject referral within the framework of general municipal law, et cetera, et cetera. The action, the town is considering applying the floating workforce housing overlay to this parcel to enable a proposed 80-unit affordable housing development. Comments? We informally reviewed the application of the workforce housing overlay in May 2022 and are pleased to see the ongoing progress of the proposed site. The town's commitment to expanding affordable housing through the workforce housing floating district is commendable and addresses a critical need here in our communities. The proposed 80-unit development represents a significant step forward in providing a much-needed affordable housing. We appreciate the town's thoughtful and persistent efforts to bring this project to fruition, and we support the formal application of the overlay to the designated parcel. Recommendation, the department recommends that the board rely upon its own study of the facts in the case. Do consideration of the above comments. And it's signed by Owen Rafter.[1145.83][1145.83](Applause) We were pleased to get that. Steve Rosenberg is next.
Thank you, Steve Rosenberg, 25 Flat Avenue. I am appreciating seeing the sea of green out here. I'm so glad this project has finally reached this stage. Our community, like every community in the Hudson Valley, needs more housing that most people can afford. It's in the right location, a location that was identified years ago for a project just like this because it's compact, it's walkable to the village center, the library, and the park, and it can be served by existing water and sewer. It's what planners call smart growth. It will be climate smart. And as development goes, it's a more efficient way to use land and better for our natural environment than the large lot, single-family subdivisions that predominate in the rest of the town. The developer has worked with our elected officials to respond to community interests and concerns. Let's get the details buttoned up, and let's get it done. Thank you.[1217.98][1217.98](Applause)
Becky Tyer.
Hi, I'm Becky Tyer. I live in Village Green Apartments. I don't own a green shirt, but I am with the Green Gang.[1241.02][1241.02](Laughter) Appreciate seeing all that. I appreciate all the effort that has gone into presenting all of this and making all of this available and that the community's had many opportunities to speak. And the group has come forth with changes based on input, and so that's very heartwarming to see. My husband and I just celebrated our third year living in Reinbeck last week. And we are renters, and we are very concerned about the rental prices. And I majored in economics in college, so I understand supply and demand. And if we have more apartments for people to rent, not only will it assist the people that work in our community, but it might help those of us who are, you know, struggling with rental increases. Our rent went up almost 30% since we moved in. And we have a lovely one-bedroom apartment that we rented sight unseen because we moved here during COVID and couldn't even tour apartments. We looked from Poughkeepsie to Albany, and there was very little available. But Reinbeck was our first choice, and we were very, very fortunate to, that an opening came and we were able to take it. We hope that we're able to stay in it. But like I said, that's, you know, almost 30% is a really big increase in three years. So I do believe that if we have many more choices in rental units, whether it's accessory dwelling units behind houses, or whether it's more apartments being built, or houses turned into duplexes, all of the rental opportunities in our area, I'm for that and stand in support of that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.[1336.12][1336.12](Applause) Would anybody else like to speak? Come on up, Donna.
Thank you, Donna Warner, Beach Street in Reinbeck. And I did write, I have written comments I'll give to the town clerk. But I just wanted to say that, by the way, this is wonderful. It's wonderful to see everyone here. It's, anyway, it's-[1376.12][1376.12](Laughter) I don't know what to say. I paid $10 for the green shirt.[1381.02][1381.02](Laughter) But I did want to say that I support Locust Hill because it does increase housing options in Reinbeck, making room for individuals and families, as Ken Carney said, across a broad income spectrum, far more than I realized. And that it will be quite affordable for many people. And I do want to mention that when we, Adam Bosch from Patterns for Progress spoke at the Affordable Housing Conversation at Messiah in April, and he really spoke to the trends, demographic and housing, that affect us now in Reinbeck and also will in the next decade. It's only going to get worse, that we will have less attainable or affordable housing, a shrinking workforce, continued declines in our school enrollments, longer wait times to access health care. Someone in the audience, he asked, "How long have you waited to see a doc?" And she said something like 14 months. And fewer civic volunteers. So what we're doing here is really critical to the future of Reinbeck. And in my opinion, Locust Hill actually fulfills a town goal that was established six years ago. This is not that recent. It was six years ago when the zoning code was amended to create a floating workforce housing district. But I also wanted just to mention, I followed this over the past two years. And Ken Carney and his team have really listened and incorporated important recommendations, as far, as best I can tell, by reading the various Town Board reports, that they've incorporated important recommendations from the Town Boards and from residents in a revised design. And just to recap, relocating the entrance further west down near the Town Highway Department, creating a walking path to connect the residents of Locust Hill and also Wells Manor to the sidewalk into the village, clustering the smaller buildings and clustering them around a common green gathering space and breaking up this long parking lot into small lots behind the buildings. So these were all recommendations, as I understand, from our planning board and so on. So thank you very much. I really appreciate it.[1544.62][1544.62](Applause)
Anybody else like to speak? Come on up.
Hi, everyone. Please do not mistake my lack of green for neutrality. I am unequivocally pro-affordable housing. My name's Michelle Montalbano. I'm a librarian at Star Library and a renter on South Street in the Village. And I will start by saying that I could not continue to live here. My rent is not sustainable if we did not make these changes and make them quickly. And I think it's incredibly meaningful to have a librarian who is incorporated into village life such that I am here at this meeting today and have been involved in helping these conversations that have been happening for a long period of time. I'm aligned with everyone here today in considering the affordable housing crisis to be one of the most pressing issues we face. If people don't have stable, secure, and affordable housing, the rest of their lives become fundamentally precarious. The cost of housing, education, and health care have skyrocketed since the 1970s while wages have remained stagnant. People, even many people here in Reinbeck, are one owner's medical bill or car repair away from falling behind on their rent or mortgage payments. So I believe it is our responsibility to build a more inclusive and diverse Reinbeck where people at a variety of income levels are able to live and work. While policy solutions focused on rent regulations and a mandatory minimum wage of $25 an hour would be a huge win for working-class Reinbeckers, building an affordable housing complex such as Locust Hill would go a long way toward providing relief to cosforded renters by adding more inventory to the market. And let's get this buttoned up, as Steve said.
Would anybody else like to speak? I think we're going to hold the public hearing open, Warren, to make sure that we're properly noticed in the newspaper. We're, to be honest, unsure. We can't find our notice of putting it in the newspaper. And we don't want to put any legal jeopardy on this process. So we're going to re-notice and keep it open until our July meeting, when you can all come back and say the same thing.[1719.44][1719.44](Laughter)
We're wearing green shirts.
Just wear shorts and smile in the audience. And then we'd like to wrap it up. We still have to hear back from the planning board and our Conservation Advisory Board. But we're in good stead. So if people don't have any more questions or comments or want to show up new green shirts, do you want to come up? Come on up.
After 15 years of not having our zoning law filled out with a chapter on affordable housing that was meaningful, we now see the stars reeling our line. You have the best site that is going to be secluded, it's going to blend in, it's going to keep Reinbeck the looking rural. You have the land. The land came with money. Wonderful. We have a- We have a developer who has a great reputation. Indeed, when I was liaison to the Affordable Housing Committee for years, we heard the name. Developer is experienced, and he has the money to do it. So the stars are aligned. To me, it's a no-brainer, and I hope that the various boards that this has to go through will move it because this is something that's been hanging around for 15 years, and it's really time to do it. So, thank you.
You should, you know, and then start thinking about the second one. But, um... To be continued for legal... Alan, you want to come up and be a newbie again?
I never got so much credit for stealing someone else's acronym.
It was the right thing at the right time. Say it again.
You're right. I hope my parole officer sees it now.
No, I just want to thank the board, and I want to thank you for pushing this forward because this really is important to us, and really, as you can tell, very, very much supported by the community. Donna Warner, when I was president of the Star Library Board, Donna Warner did long-range planning for us, as she has dug for the town board. And I remember her conclusion, you know, she's a Harvard grad, she said, "We owe..." We need young people. We did demographic study of Rhinebeck, and we, you know, this is an issue that I parked on forever. We need affordable housing. We need young people to come here. Anybody who's tried to get workers knows that they're short-staffed all the time, they can't find people to work, and it affects the services that are available to us. And, you know, I'm a business major. This is good for our economy. This is very, very good for our economy. So I want to thank the board for doing what they've done and pushing it forward.
I don't know how you guys feel, but it's terrific to see the support, to have the support, and it means a lot. And I mean it, like, let's start thinking about the second one. Let's get through this part. We do need to continue it, just to make sure that we dotted our i's and crossed our t's. We want to renotice this in the newspaper. July 8th, right, Joni? What? I think that...
Yes.
July 8th at 6:00 PM. You don't have to say anything. It'd be nice if you came back in your green shirts. We're going to continue with the meeting, if you want to stay or not, but we'll get everybody. Thank you.
See you, guys.
I know, it was just like, should be awesome meeting. I'm glad you're out.
So good to see you.
I should go back to...
I don't know if we'll have a floor. That's when it's supposed to be.
Incredible to see that what we do has had this kind of impact. Congratulations. As far as I know, it's just an AMI.com address, so I don't think that would disappear. Yeah.
You've been away a lot, hasn't it? That's why we have been away. We really have been away. Yeah, getting those mop passes away. So we went out.
But, you know, two hundred more. Are you serious?
I know, and she was so...
Not a memory that I ever had.
You wore green.
Way. No, I'm so sorry.
I'm proud.
It was in the laundry, and I pulled it out, and it smelled so bad, I shouldn't have had it, but you were...
Smooth.
I wanted to see the back.
Neutral, too. Oh, fabulous. Fabulous. Oh, that's wonderful. You did this until much earlier. Did you ever wear it?
Well, I wore it to meet.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm meeting.
You have a T-shirt, only by Trump, and people have?
No, no, no. We had a big team. I was very enthusiastic, like, 40 kids had this. I like these. These are different numbers.
Totally different.
I like these.
Well, now it's coming together. That was a big difference. We had to...
I even went to the village to get the numbers, and I took a picture of it, and they were still very high, 20/20.
He had originally put it out as 60% to 80% of AMI, but different income levels for 1, 2, 3, but this is totally new, that it's going that low. It's truly mixed. It's truly mixed in. I'm thrilled with this, that there's green, there's nice sprinkling for everybody. Michelle says she's missing, trying to find Michelle a better place. She's not going to qualify.
It sounded like she wanted a place.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's not wonderful, but she's trying to do it.
Yeah, she's paying, you know what, it's not in my business to tell him.
Although it's probably public.
I mean, if she's...
But I was going to say, if you find that.
Donna tipped me off when there's an opening.
No, no, she's not. No, I don't want to... She's got a few other places that was in that Victorian house that was cut off in the apartment, that one of our book club members owns.
No, I know she lives nearby, but tried to find her door to Noddon. It's one of those places you can't figure out. She had just a little balcony on the second...
Donna, we're going to continue with the meeting. I need, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask everybody to sit down. I need a... Do we need Warren for anything else? What do we have?
A short-term rental.
Let's do our short-term, oh, jeez, I should have said that while everyone was here. We are, oh my gosh. Everybody back in, but we'll send out a notice. We're, let me get, hold on. Jeez, how could I have forgotten that? Tab 5. I need a motion, no, it's not.
No, tab 6.
Thank you. I need a motion for 2024-263, amendment to our short-term rental law. I have a motion.
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, we'll take a chance. We recently passed a short-term rental law, and we wanted to make two amendments. We wanted to pass it. When we passed it, but the two amendments we're making are very simple. We're going to allow farm stays on properties that are in the agricultural district and have ag exemptions, which means that they have to be actual working farms, and they have to make money on it. We want to continue to encourage events and farm stays at farms. We have several farms here that rent themselves out for weddings, and a lot of the farms, like Richard Creed, are not on one parcel. There are many parcels, so he doesn't live on a parcel where he rents out a short-term rental. These will still be subject to the same rules, and if they're bad at it, they'll lose their license. And the other very minor amendment, we think, is that there are two or three people who basically have accessory dwellings adjacent to their primary residence on a separate parcel of land. And they could go through the process to do a lot line adjustment, but that's costly, and it takes a long time. These are houses that are like 300, 400 square feet, they're studios, that they have been renting out as short-term rentals, and rather than have them go through a difficult process of doing a lot line adjustment, we want to allow the rental of one additional dwelling next door to a person's primary residence while they're in the primary residence that's contiguous to the primary residence. So it has to be a budding of their land. It has to share a lot line. It's basically existing accessory dwellings that, because of whatever weird reasons, are on separate lots owned by the same people. So we'll talk about this more, but that's what we're bringing to the floor this evening. Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from anyone in the audience? That was good. We can talk about it more at the Workforce Housing Continuation in July, when we'll have a big... And I will reach out to the people who commented on short-term rental and let this know that this is what we're doing. But we did say that we wanted to address farm stays, and rather than have a big blown-out event code, we want to allow this, and then we'll work on wedding venues and events on farms. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Warren, thank you.
Okay.
Any others? See you in July. I talked to you before then. I need a, am I all caught up here? Just stay with me one second. I need a, good night, Warren, thank you. I need a motion, tab 2, Resolution 2024-259, to appoint Drake and Loeb as special prosecutor. Thanks, Chauncey, may I have a second?
Margaret.
Thanks, Alan. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I need a motion for 2024-260, amendment to comp and benefits now.
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chad. That's Alan. Chad. Very simple, we're doing two simple things. One is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, town hall is closed at 1:00 PM. People will have to use their personal time off, paid time off, but we're closing town hall at 1:00 PM. The second thing is, I have a slight amendment here, 3.3.5, use of sick leave. An employee may take paid leave only after it's been credited. Sick leave may not be used in increments of less than 15 minutes, and I'm amending this to say after the first hour. So the amendment to this is after the first hour. We don't want people leaving 15 minutes early with a headache, but we want people to be able to go to a doctor's appointment and take an hour and 15 minutes or an hour and a half and not be docked for two hours of time. This is to protect our employees' sick time. Sometimes they're just running to a doctor's appointment. It takes 45 minutes. We don't want to dock them for two hours. The other thing is an amendment to premiums. I'm sorry, the same thing is with the use of personal leave. We're doing it in increments of 15 minutes, because again, you have to run out and pick up your kid from school. It takes you 20 minutes. We don't want to charge you for two hours. We're changing the premiums paid by workers. We had a four-tier system where people paid 5%, 10%, 12.5%, and 20%, and we were losing people. People couldn't afford to work here with a 20% co-pay on their insurance. So we're going to two tiers. Our senior employees will be getting 5%, and everyone else is at 12.5%. We've struck out the 90% because everyone was either hired before 2004 or after 2013. So it splits normally, and that's, those are the only changes. Any comments or questions from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. I need a motion for tab 4, 2024-261, to update Resolution 2024-045, retirement standard workday hours. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We've done the, oh, okay, this is a big one. I need a motion for 2024-262, the Alta Planning Revised Trail feasibility study, scope and FID. May I have a motion?
Margaret.
Thanks, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chad. We are revising our ALTA study for a biking and walking trail to connect Rhine Cliff to the Village at the Thompson Maserella Park. We were doing this four years ago, and then it sort of crumbled during COVID. We resurrected it. We have Dana Peterson, who's a resident from Rhine Cliff, and a very smart woman, a non-practicing attorney with kids, who is dying to see this done as early, and Alan working on it. The issue is that in the four years, ALTA's fees have gone up, and the scope of what we want to look at has grown a bit. So it's going to take another $40,000 to get this done. I have here a resolution allowing that, but I want to talk about it publicly and make sure that Chauncey and Chad have some time to get on the phone with ALTA and Alan and Dana, not all three of you at once because it would be a meeting, but to make sure you understand what the scope of this is and that it's attainable, which I believe it is, but I want you two to be sure that you feel that. So I'm happy to schedule a Zoom or have you schedule a Zoom with our ALTA person, Kristi and Dana, so that you go through it and have a comfort level with this. And then you can decide whether or not you think spending an additional $40,000 is worth it. The $40,000 would get us a plan, take us through public outreach, and have it shovel-ready, as it were, for grant funding, to get it built.
Great.
So we'll table this, yeah?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Joni, can you put it back on for July? Yep? Thank you. I need a motion for 2024-264, Recreation 2024 Hires. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chad. Any comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. I need a motion for 2025-265, amending Resolution 2024-232, awarding the bid for the sale of surplus cemetery truck. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thanks. Thanks, Chance. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chad. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I will make a motion for 2024-266 for our preliminary accounts payable abstracts. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chance. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And I will make a motion for tab 10, Resolution 2024-267, for our capital projects abstracts. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Any comments or questions? This is a big-ticket item. We're getting a new highway truck. Bob is very excited about it as our way to keep our inventory up to date. Once a truck gets up to 20 years old, it's time to go. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I have two new pieces of new business. Just bear with me. Okay. I have Resolution 2024-286, hiring of a temporary seasonal laborer. May I have a motion? Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. One of our seasonal workers has to leave in two weeks to take care of his grandson. Jamie Dervisher is a known entity to us. He's worked for us seasonally for two years. He's going to work on the gardens here at Town Hall, work under Bobby and spruce up our, we're going to make him a Greens person dedicated to grooming the park a little bit and getting us spiffed up here. So he'll be up to 30 hours a week through, I think, the beginning of September and we will be looking for an additional person to replace James who's been helping us outwatering. As we grow, we just find we need more help, you know, with keeping things manicured. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Also, we did, we got a, we got someone for the Conservation Advisory Board, Dr. Joseph Merlino, and our Chair of the Conservation Advisory Board met with him, doesn't want to lose him, so I said we appoint him tonight. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Joseph Merlino of 8 Rosewood Lane in Rhinebeck to a seat on the Conservation Advisory Board to, Joan, I'm not sure when it expires. An expiration date to be determined by the clerk. And thank Dr. Merlino for stepping up. And I will get Alan, you'll have to call him and Jim Levy will give him an 140.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Joan, did I have anything else from the floor?
Joan, can you send me his contact information?
Here.
Oh, that was quick.
Yeah. Any other... Oh, I just want to let everybody know that I'm attending a visioning session at the Star Library and they're deciding whether or not they're going to expand. And part of what we're finding out is that they're becoming our de facto community house. We have a community... You are as well. You're going for, I forgot when I'm, they're having six different sessions. You're attending one, I'm attending one. And one thing, you know, that I raised is Phase 3 of the Park Plan is a community center with a parking lot right across Traver Lane from the library. Is it time to start talking about this? What does the community need? How do we start? But a library is an important resource. More and more people gathering there. It's being used for exercise classes, meeting rooms. And, you know, it's exciting to talk about their possible expansion and what it means for us as a town to have a community center in the plan and what are we going to look at that. So all to be determined, but it's always good to work with a library. That's it. Anybody else have anything else to add?
I'd like to report a little field goal.
Great.
But I enjoy it.
Better than this public theory?
The pickleball courts can't be adjusted by players the way tennis courts can, for those of you who play tennis. They require a special tool. I have one, Bobby Fitzpatrick has two, and they needed adjustment. So I was over very early last Wednesday morning so that I wouldn't be disturbing any players. I didn't think anybody would either when I got there at quarter of seven and indeed there was nobody there. So I was doing what I was there to do and the young woman walked onto the court. I don't know, I hadn't seen her before. She said, I said, "Good morning." She said, "Good morning, are you maintenance?" I said, "Well, no, but I've kind of been involved with pickleball courts." I said, "Are you enjoying them?" She said, I forgot exactly how many years she said she's lived here. She and her husband, he was warming up, running out in the grass or someplace and she had two paddles. I think she said 24. Anyway, she's lived here a long time. She said, "In my whole life, I've never before found anything physical, any kind of physical activity that I liked. But I love pickleball. These courts have changed my life."
Chancey's not excited about pickleball. He didn't, you know, he was a little warm about the project and glad he warmed up to it. Anybody else? Any questions or comments from anyone in the... I just want to say, I was talking to Eric from the Hudson Valley Pilot and two years ago, we had a public information session about workforce housing, two and a half years ago. And it kept 50 cups in the back room. The room was packed and people were screaming at us and they were angry and they were accusing us of, and the Workforce Housing Committee, of ruining Rhinebeck and how far we've come. The support is overwhelming and I think it is important to the town. So I want to say thank you to everybody for sticking with us, for giving your comments, for letting us respond and for being supportive. That's how we work together. So, thank you. Nobody, other comments?
I have one.
Oh, okay.
So if you go to the town website and find the Historians page, one there is a link to several hundred files that have pictures, documents, scans of documents, some meetings that are all very historic, all the things that Nancy Kelly was talking about earlier. We're going to get it organized, but it's in a file structure that's more or less logical. You'll find pictures from 100 years ago and documents from 200 years ago establishing land grants and that sort of thing in Rhinebeck. It's all, if you have a child that wants to help organize this, have them get ahold of me.
I think I've said, I believe we have to hire someone, but you keep swinging the bat. And Susan, our new historian, might have an idea.
Sure, yeah.
She might have an idea, but thank you. And the stuff is fascinating, so try to look at it. Okay, anybody else? Chad, you want to try? Let me try one more time? No? Okay, hearing nothing? I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Good night, everybody. Thank you for coming. We'll see you in July.